Well, you will be now.
I'll take care of it, but...
You will be now.
That's what I paid insurance for. You should know about that.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah. Hello?
I said, "Well, you know, I was very disappointed that this was in the paper." And she said, "I'm honest with you." I said, "Well, I'm just letting you know." And she tried to help me out, but they all might as well say it was in the paper. They don't say just one thing.
It's like you said, of all the headlines, and usually, you know, on the front page, and said the headline should be in the budget.
The worst part about it is the fact that they didn't ask him about it. Especially, they just floated the idea. It's like, if all we can do is write the paper, it's already been written. It's not a story.
My phone's talking like this.
I feel like she wanted them to look good and feel like, and she... Even though she said she didn't mean anything about it. Because it would have been a story, you know?
It must have been a whole story.
So, at least...
Meredith was worried.
I hope they're not, I mean, it doesn't need a thing in there. In service or anything, but it steals it.
Still thinks pot means...
The words out, it's so... I started to wear a clap coat today. Mayor, though. The mayor of the...
That's why we brought in our big shops. Need them. I need, I need protection. Crowd control. I thought you were gonna do an ear.
I swear.
Did you jog? Did you jog again? How'd I do that? Ken's out of town. Ken is out of town, but Steve Green is here. Okay, so he can answer any questions. But I'll be doing the... So, items where Ken's name on it, you'll take care of. I'll be doing there for all of them. Okay, great.
When you kind of see how each an older, you just go ahead and make a mention really quick? A-I-G, I-G-A.
Yeah, I don't know. Is he going to be on here?
How are you?
Good, well.
Do you? Ready to walk in there? When is qualifying next week or again?
This is the thirtieth, first...
What I'd like you to do is, why have a thing about yourself? Um, and should you be prepared upon this, or blah, blah, blah? I'll take that. You call this thing.
Yeah, billion wonder, get your ass out of there. Billion wonder, I think, just kind of give highlights.
Go ahead and handle it?
Yeah.
She's here? Okay.
And then, just immediately, I bet, which we're not gonna rebuild from, but...
Okay, I'm sure. So, move. Um, and...
Move check site.
Move check site. Um, so, to put in a great skyline, just in this way. I'll ask them to go along. So, if they heard one, they'll be asking about it.
Yeah, the only big question is to keep them separate.
Yeah. People may have the double, and they have the double, and they have the... It'll be funny. A lot.
Yep.
I'd like to call to order the regular council voting meeting of August 20th, 2015. Some of you may have noticed, I'm not Mayor Hobgood. Hey? And, Mayor Hobgood, I think this is the first council meeting he's missed in seven and a half years. So, we certainly appreciate his dedication. And that doesn't mean he hasn't called several times a day or checked in, so... But tonight, we'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have Nate and Connor here, two Boy Scouts, who are here to earn their badge. And we'd like to ask them to come up front. And if you'd all stand and join them in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and remain standing for invocation, please.
We worship the God of the United States of America, and in the Republic of which we stand, a nation, a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Young?
Lord, thank you very much for allowing us to come together this evening to handle the business of the people of the city of Canton. And thank you for the rain we've received this week, much needed. Thank you for the blessings you have given to this city, and help us to make the decisions we make on behalf of the people of the Canton, wise ones, and in things that are in your favor. Amen.
Amen. Tonight, we have a special presentation. It's a proclamation. And I would like to read that. Whereas, this proclamation is to honor and congratulate Mr. Byron Dobbs on the occasion of his eightieth birthday. And whereas, fifty-eight years ago, on April 11th, 1957, Mr. Byron Dobbs started in radio when he and four others signed WCHK AM in Canton, Georgia, on the air. And whereas, WCHK and Byron Dobbs brought the media to an area of North Georgia that lacked local information, news, weather, and... Whereas, Mr. Dobbs went into radio ownership in August 1998 when he and his business partner purchased WLGA FM and WPGY AM in LGA, Georgia. Whereas, at the age of seventy-one, this resident of Cherokee County was named Broadcaster of the Year in 1997 by the Georgia Association of Broadcasters. And whereas, Mr. Dobbs has been recognized by several organizations for his extensive community service and leadership, including the Rotary Club of Canton, which awarded him the Lamar Haley Community Service Award in recognition of his outstanding contributions to the citizens of North Georgia and the Cherokee County Board of Commissioners, who proclaimed Friday, August 22nd, 1997, as Byron L. Dobbs Day in recognition of his exemplary commitment. And whereas, Mr. Dobbs has served on the A-Day for Reinhardt University Executive Committee and his community, as Cherokee County Sports Hall of Fame Emeritus Director. And whereas, Mr. Dobbs is a man of impeccable character with a keen sense of vision, whose unparalleled dedication, leadership talents, remarkable patience, and diplomacy have earned him the respect and admiration of the colleagues, associates, and business partners. Therefore, I, Gene Hobgood, Mayor of the City of Canton, do hereby proclaim August 20, 2015, as Byron Dobbs Day in the City of Canton in honor recognition of his eightieth birthday for his magnificent achievements, and extend to him best wishes for continued success and happiness. Proclaim this twentieth day of August 2015, signed by Mayor Gene Hobgood. We want to congratulate Byron and wish him happy birthday. Unfortunately, he's not here to receive his proclamation. It was delivered to him at the Rock Barn, where his eightieth birthday party's already started. And from what I understand, is already in high spirits. So, we want to thank Byron and congratulate him on his many achievements, so... At this time, I'd like Chief Mitchell to come forward and recognize a promotion in our police department. Congratulations, Sergeant Furman. At this time, I would ask for your consideration to approve tonight's agenda. I do know we do need to remove Delete Item C under Old Business Discussion and Possible Action on Mitigation Settlement. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor? All opposed? All members voted for the motion. You also have in your consideration the minutes from our August 6 public hearing and council meeting. Are there any changes or additions to those minutes? If not, I have a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? All members voted for the motion. At this time, we have our ten-minute public input session. We do have two citizens who signed up to speak tonight. We would ask that you come forward to the podium and state your name and address, and speak clearly into the microphone so everyone can hear you. And I think the first speaker is Jeffrey Allen.
My name is Jeffrey Allen. Reside at 225 Gold Valley Crossing in Canton. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope everyone is doing well. I'm here this evening to solemnly express my outrage and disbelief at the unresponsiveness of the United States government to the myriad crises of our time. I am referring to the wave of murders and state-enabled violence and terror against minorities and poor communities in this country, the outrageous plunder of society generally by the super-rich through the dark collusion of corporate and government power, and the abject failure to combat climate change and environmental crisis with all the deliberate speed required to preserve civilization and biodiversity on this planet. Our government was founded upon the principle of consent of the governed. This principle is enshrined in Declaration of Independence, that governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, and that all men are created equal. I must humbly, but emphatically observe that I do not consent to the manner in which my tax dollars are being used or my government administered. I do not consent to the police apparatus in this country or the idea that the state needs to send someone with a badge and a gun on a hair trigger to resolve minor infractions appropriate to the scope of an unarmed bureaucrat. I do not consent to the existence of the county jail system across the United States, jammed as it is, full of minorities, poor people, and nonviolent offenders. Recidivism rates in our prisons demonstrate clearly that prisons don't work, and therefore, the police state possesses no moral legitimacy in incarcerating a larger percentage of the population than any other country on earth. I do not consent to imprisoning a vast proportion of the citizenry for the general crime of being black or being poor, while the real criminals in this country, the opulent plutocrats and Wall Street bankers who don't pay their fair share of taxes, wreck the national and global economy in scandal after scandal with impunity. I do not consent to pepper-spraying nonviolent protesters and handing out billions of dollars to Wall Street banks or murdering people in foreign countries using killer robots called drones or subsidizing a fossil fuel industry that is threatening to tear apart the very ecological basis of life on earth with dangerous climate change. I do not consent to a system that allows a few dirty energy billionaires, such as the Koch Brothers, to dump billions of dollars into our electoral system to purchase climate-denying politicians that fill our Congress today. And I do not consent to a political economy that herds poor and minority people into ghettos and prisons through institutionalized racism and classism while the spoils of a wealthy society are monopolized by the super-rich. I believe that there exists a multiplicity of potential solutions to these problems, but that they all involve the practice of direct democracy at the local, community level by an informed citizenry, a practice that reflects the original vision upon which this country was founded. That vision of government by consent of the governed must be extended to all people as befits a proper political expression of our inalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And so, I ask that all citizens be properly informed and given a direct say in matters that concern their inalienable rights, that the government be restructured in a form conducive to these ends, that climate change be declared the emergency that it is, and that the county jail system and police be altered or abolished in favor of a community-controlled and administered system of justice. Have a nice evening, and I hope you all are well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Next, we have Brian Martin.
Good evening. My name is Brian Martin. Live at 832 Overlook Trail, Canton, Georgia. And I would like to ask the council to reconsider the extended work hours for the hospital construction site. I'd like to know why it was deemed that they needed the extra hours to work. I think starting work hours at 4:00 AM is a little ridiculous. And I just, I'd like to know more of how that was passed, why it was passed, without anybody's input that lives in the vicinity. And I'd like for it to be reconsidered. I don't mind working in the evening, but I think 4:00 AM is a little ridiculous to start. It wakes me up every morning. When it started several weeks ago, I assumed it was just for a short period of time. But since then, I've learned that apparently it was passed for the duration of the job, which could last for two years. And I think that's a bit ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I know we discussed this briefly at our work session. Mr. Peppers, how would you like to proceed on this?
If the council would like, we could put it on the agenda for the September 3 work session for discussion among the full council. And that way, we would have public notification that it's on the agenda for discussion. I think that'd be the best route.
That sounds good. Please, could you please add that to the agenda? Miss Stanton? Next, we have items on our consent agenda. I'll read these agenda items, and then ask if there are any that need to be removed for further discussion. So, Item A is Approval of Canton Creek Bridge Repair Change Order with Arcatus for Inspection Construction Engineering Services in the amount of $19,000. It's Attachment 7A in your package. B, Approval of $247,000 Contract for Demo MV30596 Elgin Whirlwind Street Sweeper. And Item C, Approval of Vote of Support for Action Church Winter Season Warming Shelter. Are there any items you would like to remove for further discussion?
I don't necessarily want to remove them. But what is support?
There you go.
Thank you. I don't want to remove it, but what is... We got a general term here, support. Now, I missed last meeting. But what is the support? Is it, are we going to financially be involved? Or are we just giving our moral support, or what?
Moral support, a vote of support. Action Church just volunteered again to conduct the warming shelter on behalf of the city again this year. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? All members voted for the motion. Okay, and Old Business, Item A. This is the second reading and possible action of the fiscal year 2016 proposed budget. As you recall, in our work session, we had the public hearing in our last meeting, work session. City Manager Peppers?
Yes, as you know, we had a series of two council... We had a series of two council work meetings where we went over the budget and created the budget. Earlier this month, we had the public hearing on the budget. It was presented to council. Because we are cutting taxes back to 5.85 mills, going past the revenue neutral, back to cutting taxes, all it requires is approval of the council for us to move forward. We don't have to have any more readings or public comment on it. I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the budget. Any questions? Mr. Pepper?
I would just like to make a recommendation.
Yes, sir.
The letter that you wrote and you sent to the council?
Yes, sir.
As the summary, which I commend you for such an excellent summary of our work sessions in the budget. I think it ought to be published.
We will, we will put it up on the website.
Well, if it's a lot there, maybe even put something in the press about that, because it's an excellent summation of what the city is going to do in the future. So, I think we owe it to our citizens to let them, let them know, and I can't think of a better way.
Yes, sir. We'll add it in with the, with, first, we'll add it with a PDF copy of the budget that we put online. All of our budgets are online. And we've got a newsletter coming out, September, October newsletter for the city. We'll, we'll add it in with that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or discussion?
As Mayor Protown and council members, I would make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2016 budget. A motion and a second. And we're actually going to attempt electronic voting tonight. Thank you on my term here. So, we'll take this time to vote on the, on the motion. Yes.
And we have all motion approved, all members voting for the motion. I'm certainly excited about the budget and all that it's accomplishing, and at the same time, rolling back taxes, so... So, Item B under Old Business, Discussion and Possible Action on Wastewater Treatment Plant Change Order with Heavy Construction in Amount of $92,906 for Laying of Additional Pipes for Future Use. City Manager Peppers?
Mr. Hattabian's here. He can go into some more of the detail if you want it. But basically, if you'll recall from the work session, as they're working out there, we have a series of pipes that are already under the ground. And for us to get in a future project, we decided to move forward with adding piping so that we wouldn't have to go back in at a later date and tear up what we've built in. So, this is adding future capacity piping in that area. So, that's the change to the project.
And, Mr. Peppers, correct me if I'm wrong. I understand that this is a project estimate for this addition, and the likely the cost will be lower, and these costs are coming out of the contingency fund?
It's correct that we expect that the prices will come in lower. This was based off an estimate related to the project. But they're going to get in, and they'll see that it's probably less than that. If it is less than that, anything that we saved will be credited to the contingency on the project. Correct?
So, all costs and credits are coming out of the contingency fund, correct?
Yes, it's already budgeted.
That is the contingency fund of the project, not the contingent fund of the general fund, is it?
Correct.
The project. Any other questions, comments? I don't entertain a motion? Second? Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Could vote electronically? All in favor, say aye? All opposed? All members voted for the motion. As we noted, Item C came off of the Old Business Agenda, so we'll move to Item D. Updates on Park and Recreation Advisory Board. City Manager Peppers?
We did have several of you send in names for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. We're going to sit down over the next week and look at those names and see where, make sure we don't have overlap. You know, we had some that recommended people that were tied to a specific organization. We want to make sure we have good coverage citywide. So, we're going to sit down and look at that and bring it back to you in September at the work session. The names.
Great. Okay, Item F, Item E, I'm sorry. Discussion and Possible Action on Sidewalk Dining Ordinance. Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Dyer has a copy of the revisions, and I'll let him go over those.
I put in front of each of you a revised ordinance from what, from the work session. Based on the comments, I struck the provision that required the umbrellas to be removed in a storm and changed the umbrellas to permit no writing. It had made an exception for logos. I took that exception out. Otherwise, it's the same ordinance you discussed.
So, a motion approved and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, or vote electronically? Possibly? All in favor, say aye? All opposed? All members vote in favor of the motion. Item F, Discussion and Possible Action on the Plan and Commission Recommendation, Case ZCA 1506001, Amending Conditions of MP 1506001. The Village is at River Point. Community Development Director Ken Patton, I believe, is here. But Steve Green is here for any questions. But City Manager Peppers, you want to present this?
Basically, what was presented at the work session, they requested two items as it relates to changes, and Steve can verify this. One of them relates... One of them relates to the pedestrian bridge that was asked to be built from the development to the shopping center adjacent to it. The other item has to do with a transit stop on the property. That's it, right? That's it. Planning Commission recommended the removal of both. I know there had been some discussion as to whether or not you wanted to do that on the transit stops. I don't think anybody necessarily was in favor of not removing the, the bridge. I think that's going to be a little bit cost prohibitive, and it's very, there's a good distance there, too. I'm not sure that that project makes so much sense moving forward, but the transit stops, that was, that was, I think, the one item that, that I heard the most comments on from council members looking into the case.
Councilwoman McGree?
At the hearing at the Planning Commission, did anyone from the community speak in favor or against these changes? No one came and spoke. Thank you.
Ms. Tuffin?
I hadn't done a lot of looking into this, but a transit stop seems where it's located, unless there's another transit stop very close, would be appropriate. Is there another transit stop that's somewhat close? But there's going to be quite a few establishments, homes back there, and I think it would behoove actually the builder to have those transit stops back. I have a transit stop back there. I just think it's a plus. But is there another transit, my question, is there another transit stop accessible for them to, to use?
Not, not easily accessible, and there's only the one that's required in the project.
But is there another one close by that's not theirs that would serve the purpose?
I would say not reasonably accessible.
Yeah.
I would tend to agree, and, and I think we require other developments to have the transit stops. I believe the developer said that he was not opposed to having a transit stop in the future, so I would be in favor of, of leaving that in the master plan as a condition, but certainly eliminating the pedestrian bridge. It would be, Mr. Dyer?
One, one possible solution would be to require when a certain number of homes are built, there's, that subdivision is not, we're not talking about things we've done in the past, but after a certain number of building permits are issued, they have to put a transit stop in because there's, that subdivision is not very well built out. I mean, there's not that many homes in there now, so that would be one, not making them do it right now, but do it when it's more, more needed.
They are building now, are they building new homes now?
No. Well, I would think if they had it there, they might have more contracts to build because people are looking for mobility and, and if we had it there, they, they might be more appealing.
I mean, does the master plan require them to have one now, or, I mean, are we just saying that we don't want to remove that requirement from the master plan, or are we saying they have to build one now?
I'll let Steve answer that for you.
Okay.
The master plan was not specific as to when the transit shelter would be built. Like Mr. Dyer said, if you want to keep it in there, it'd be a possibility that you require that it be installed when the next number of homes have been built in there. I would mention that there's a larger development that's back behind it called Etowah Shoals that was approved several years ago, and nothing has been built on that either, but that development was approved for around 1,200 homes.
Which is when you'd really need it.
Yes. If that, in the time that I've been with the city, not much is taking place on Etowah Shoals. There's just been a little, I talked about the development of that, but at some point in time, it very well could be developed in the near future with the day's economy, hopefully keeping up the way that it's going.
Mr. Green, can we be assured that we won't let them forget about it?
Certainly.
Like we've had a problem before?
Yes, sir. As long as it's on our watch, we'll keep an eye on it.
Thank you.
So, I think the best way to accomplish that is if we left that as a condition of the master plan, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they have to build it now, correct?
You can modify that condition that, that the transit shelter be built when the homes are 50% built out, 80%, or, you know, whatever number that the council may deem appropriate.
I don't know what's a reasonable number. Mr. Dyer, you might have an idea when you brought that up.
How many, how many homes is it approved for, Steve?
Right around 100. 100.
So, 50 seems like a reasonable number to me.
Okay.
50%?
50. How many homes are built there now, do you?
I think there's eight in there now currently.
Eighteen.
The developer that presented the application is here tonight, too.
Is here.
That's the gentleman that's in the back.
Is that the gentleman in the back?
He's raising his hand as if he wants to speak. Is that what you want to do? Yes, you may.
Yes, you may. I'll answer that, Ms. Tuffin.
Thank you.
My name is Dan Mason. I'm the declaring out at Villages at River Point, and I work for Walton Development Management. And we just asked that, and I have 14 homeowners out there right now, and 12 of them have signed letters that we submitted with the Planning Commission that they do not want the shelter out there, just because, you know, for one, the main reason, there's not a bus system anymore where the city can. So, to build a bus stop for something that does not exist just seems, doesn't seem too sensible to me. So, that, that was our main point for asking it to be removed, just in case there's something in the future. You know, there's only 100 homes, and, you know, we'd be happy to put a, a post out there if that's what you guys would want to see, but to build a shelter that our residents would be responsible for if something has, if it's vandalized or anything like that, for something that possibly could happen in the future, just seems, that's why we've asked for it to be removed.
When do you anticipate, you know, having 50 homes in the development?
Currently, the project is, we have the project under contract with a builder to take down lots. You know, it just depends on how fast they can sell, so it could be, you know, within the next two years possibly. So, I, I mean, do you, I guess my thing is you're building something for something that does not exist.
Well, if there, if there are homes out there and there is a need for transportation, I'm sure that eventually that Katz would get out there.
Well, Katz is already at the Walmart.
Well, that's the question I was asking before.
My understanding, they're at the Walmart.
That's the question I was asking before. Is there a station close by that provides that? And can they get to it coming across without the bridge?
Katz does do a drop-off at the Walmart location, and I mentioned reasonably accessible because, I mean, technically, you, you would have to walk past the neighborhood, past the hotel, on the Old Five, walk down to the Walmart, walk into the shopping center, and all the way to the Walmart. I, I just, that's why I said reasonably accessible.
I agree.
The thing that I would mention, though, is, is you're exactly right. Katz could service the area. The other thing is, this is not an age-restricted neighborhood, and you could end up with students in the area. The roads are not made for school buses to do pickups and drop-offs within the neighborhood, and I would just mention that to you as well.
Councilwoman McGree?
I don't mind removing the pedestrian bridge to the shopping center, but I'd like to see the bus stop shelter remain and revisited in a year, because we don't know what's going to happen in the city in a year, and I foresee a lot of growth and possibly public transportation being offered. And it would be better to have it remain in the master plan and be prepared for that.
Any other questions or comments?
Are we to vote, or are we?
Is there a motion?
Ms. McGree, are you making a motion?
I will make a motion. I make a motion that we remove the pedestrian crossing from the residential area to the shopping center, but leave the public transit shelter in place and revisit that at a later time, say in 50 homes or a year.
A motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion? Say aye. All opposed? All members voted for the motion. Okay, our next item under old business is item G, discussion and possible action on Planning Commission Recommendation Case CUP 1506, Conditional Use for Church at 110 Bluffs Parkway. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, this is a conditional use permit to allow a church to locate within the same commercial building that the Sears is currently located in, up on Bluffs Parkway. The agreement was approved by the Planning Commission. The one thing I would note is that they did not, in their recommendation, they did not tie the conditional use permit to the actual church, which is something that the city has done in the past, so that it's not passed on from user to user. It's tied to that specific entity. And then there was a question that came up to us as to whether or not the church locating there would restrict entities from moving into that area that might serve alcohol. And I reached out to Mr. Dyer if he would like to comment on that, but our belief is no that it wouldn't have an impact.
In 2011, we amended the ordinance, alcohol ordinance, to remove the distance requirements in several places. One of them is a tenant in a commercial shopping center. So, our distance requirements do not apply to a church that's become a tenant in a shopping center.
And then, Mr. Peppers, could you remind me again what the specific church is, is its location?
It would be Mount Paran North.
Mount Paran North?
Yes, sir.
So, I believe, as you said, in other locations and shopping centers, we've conditioned it to that church only.
Typically, when, when cities take up conditional use permits, they tie it to the entity.
Makes sense.
Mr. Peppers, would the church be made aware that, that the ordinance has changed, that it's sometime later, if this, an organization wants to go in there, that it's okay for them to go in there? If they're, if they're going to serve alcohol, that the ordinance has already been in place, they may or may not want to use that location if they knew that that potential exists.
Well, and that's, that's why Mr. Dyer and I talked. I mean, this has been in our, in our process now for, since 2011, so the applicants coming in after you've already made the decision to, to exclude those tenants in general commercials, so they should have the knowledge, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to bring that up tonight.
Any other discussion? I'd like to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit with a condition that is limited to Mount Paran North. A motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Okay, moving on to a new business. Item A, discussion and possible action on request by Georgia Power for easement at 1250 Old Ball Ground Highway. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, sir. This was not at the work session. This is something that came up just past the work session. As you know, there's a QuickTrip that's under construction there next to our pump facility on Riverstone. Georgia Power reached out to us to see if they could get an easement through our property as it relates to the project, and they were hoping for a quick turnaround so that they could get it done and keep the project moving. So, we've put it on the agenda for your consideration. Mr. Dyer's seen all of the agreements as it relates to the, to the easement.
Mr. Peppers, one question I had, understand from reading this is underground easement?
That's correct.
And at some point, if we had to make repairs or to, to the pump station or to our facility there, would that require us that we would have to pay to relocate the Georgia Power services?
The easement is only running across the driveway in. It's not in the area of the pump station.
So, in the area of our station, then, right, correct?
It, it runs directly across the driveway.
We have an easement for our driveway.
Well, actually, it's not clear whether it's easement or whether we own it. If, if we just have an easement, we don't have to do this, but I think we own it. I think we condemned in fee simple the driveway and the area of the pump station. This is right close to the road, just running across, so it should not interfere with anything the city's doing, because I don't even think that driveway's paved. I think it is gravel.
No, it is gravel.
Mr. Dyer, does that interfere with all with our proposal rearranging the sewer line that goes along the side of the river? You know, we got that.
It, it's, yeah, it's not anywhere close to the sewer line. It, it is out close to the road, but far enough away, even if the sewer line runs along the right of way. It's just running between essentially Enterprise and the new QuickTrip.
But it's coming down, and it's going from the Bluffs, it's going to run right through the Enterprise little shelter, I believe.
They, they deal with these issues all the time.
It won't go that far back. Mr. Hattavian says we're good.
Ms. McGree?
I'm just going to make a motion that we approve.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussions? All members in favor? Say aye. All opposed? All members vote in favor of the motion. Moving on to item B, discussion and possible action on the intergovernmental agreement with Downtown Development Authority. Mr. Peppers?
Ms. Roach, who's the chairwoman of the authorities here, I would invite her to come up. I'll, I'll give just a little overview. The Downtown Development Authority is wanting to work with the city to try to find a potential user for the old school board properties that the city acquired, and in doing so, would like to propose this intergovernmental agreement back to the city that basically says that if they can find a user, that we would use them as the broker on the deal.
Good evening. On behalf of the DDA Board, I'd like to express to y'all how excited we are about the possibility of working to secure a buyer for the site with the historic buildings. We feel like this intergovernmental agreement, which we approved unanimously and I have signed, is the right vehicle for the city to allow us to go forward with this development. And I want to say that we look forward to working with the city to see this come to fruition.
Thank you.
Motion before with the IGAs?
A motion and a second. Any other discussions? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All members vote in favor of the motion. Thank you. We look forward to working with you all as well. City Manager's report. Mr. Peppers?
I only have one thing tonight. I wanted to bring this to council's attention. I try not to read the soapbox too much, but I did read the soapbox, and I did want to bring something to your attention. There was a, a statement in here about the city and its right-of-ways as it, as it relates to the interstate. I had instructed our staff in Public Works to go out and cut interchanges, and we did receive a notice from the Department of Transportation asking us to stop doing that until we had a more updated mowing agreement with them. None of the other cities in the county have a mowing agreement with them, and they maintain their own right-of-ways, so we're working on coming up with some agreement so that we can keep our city looking good without going through their process and their time period on getting it done. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention and let you know that we are working on it.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
If, if we knew somebody in community development, maybe the Georgia Department, maybe they could help us?
Our state representative was very interested in the discussion that we had with GDOT.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Well, I just want to thank everyone. I think this is a new record, and I'm probably going to get scolded for not making this meeting last longer, but I want to thank everyone for their efficient process tonight and positive movement forward. I want to thank all the public for attending us and our scouts who let us under Pledge of Allegiance. And at this time, entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion and a second. All members in favor? Aye. Opposed? Adjourned. Adjourned.